The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now in session, please be seated.
Good morning, Mrs. Shephard. [S02] Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, the final witnesses of the Perth Hearing Block are the Honourable Paul Papalia, CSC MLA, and Ms. Linda Dawson. Minister Papalia was appointed to the Western Australian State Government Cabinet in March 2017. His current portfolios relevantly include being Minister for Defence Industry and for Veterans Affairs. Ms. Dawson is the Deputy Director General of Industry, Science and Innovation within the Department of Jobs, Tourism, Science and Innovation in the Western Australian Government. Minister Papalia and Ms. Dawson are already in the witness box, may they be given the affirmation?
Linda Dawson, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? [S03] I do. Minister Paul Papalia, do you solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? [S04] I do.
Perhaps just before you go on, Mr. Shephard, just for appearances, Mr. Sefton?
May I please the Commission, I appear on behalf of the State of Western Australia and the current witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Sefton. Operator, can you please display the tender list? I tender the documents in the tender bottle in the manner in which they are described. Thank you, they'll be accepted into evidence and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers. Commissioners, aside from some introductory matters, there are three broad topics that I proposed to canvass with the Minister and Ms. Dawson this morning. Firstly, an overview of the state government's veterans and families strategy in Western Australia. Secondly, the services provided or funded by the Western Australian Government with a particular focus on homelessness, employment, health and veteran incarceration. And thirdly, the relationship between the federal and state government in relation to veterans issues in Western Australia. Minister, commencing with some introductory matters, you're a veteran yourself, aren't you?
Yes.
And to elaborate, you entered the Royal Australian Navy in 1978 and served in the military for 26 years, eventually qualifying as a navy clearance sergeant. And you also served in the counter-terrorist squadron of the Special Air Service Regiment and deployed on operations to Iraq on two occasions?
Yes.
You were awarded the conspicuous service cross and commendations from both the land and maritime commanders before leaving the service in early 2004?
That's right.
And you've been a member of the Western Australian State Parliament since 2007?
Yes.
And you've previously served as Shadow Minister for Tourism, Corrective Services and Defence Issues?
Yes, and some other portfolios, it doesn't matter.
And how long have you held the portfolios of the Minister for Defence Industry and the Minister for Veterans Issues?
Since, I had Defence Industry, or a different variant, since 2017 when we were elected, and the veterans portfolio I've held since the last election, March 2021.
And what is the department in Western Australia that is responsible for veterans affairs?
It's Department of Jobs, Tourism, Science and Innovation is the parent agency, and we have a small agency, Defence West, within which our veterans portfolio sits. They're part of Jobs, Tourism, Sites and Innovation.
And can you just briefly explain to the Commissioners what Defence West is?
So Defence West is, it's an agency that we established when we were elected in 2017 to represent the interests of Defence Industry in Western Australia. At the last election, or just before, we moved that, the veterans staff, and it's very small, we have two FTE handling veterans, we moved them into Defence West.
Now, Minister, you have other ministerial portfolios as well, correct?
Yeah, I'm also the Minister for Police and Road Safety.
And how do you split your time between those portfolios? And by that I mean, how much as a percentage of your time is spent on veterans issues?
Well, veterans matters, it's not core business for state government, so we do have a focus on it, we have a small budget, as with regard to my time, it's probably less than a quarter of my time, but it's never predictable and changes daily.
Thank you. And Ms. Dawson, the department in which you currently hold the position of Deputy Director General, that's the Department of Jobs, Tourism, Science and Innovation, isn't it?
Correct.
As I understand it, there are two separate acts which govern the veteran issues portfolio. They are the ANZAC Day Act of 1960 and the Western Australian Aged Sailors, Soldiers and Airmen's Relief Fund Act. Is that correct?
That's right.
Now, can you please explain to the Commissioners the importance of those acts to the veteran issues portfolio?
Well, the most important one's the ANZAC Day Act. It governs our ANZAC Day Trust, which is a vehicle through which we pass our funding for delivery of services and grants for support of veterans. So it receives annually a revenue of $1.3 million from the state, and then disburse all of it. The other act really is not a vehicle for government activity. It enables the RSLWA to raise funds via Poppy Day fundraising, and all of that money is controlled by a board associated with that activity, and they disperse the funds under their own rules and in accordance with their own decisions. We don't really have any impact on that.
Am I correct that the ANZAC Day Trust is the primary conduit by which the state funds veterans?
So the other one, the Poppy fundraising raises about $150,000 a year, I think, whereas our ANZAC Day Trust receives $1.3 million annually.
So you've mentioned the $1.3 historically, has that also been the case?
No, so when we first took office, the amount was $300,000 a year, and at the last election, we committed to increasing it fourfold, so we did, and so now it's gone up to $1.3 million.
And what is the process by which grants are made from the ANZAC Day Trust? And what are the key considerations?
So there's a board who receive grant applications and deliberate as to how they might be distributed, and then make recommendations to me as to where the grants should go. We've given them indication or informal advice that we would prefer that our effort is focused on support of veterans with a smaller component of the funds to go towards commemorative purposes. But the commemorative purposes, we only wanted to predominantly support events of commemorative events of national significance. And the majority of the money, we would like to go towards supporting veterans and mostly focused on successful transition of veterans from their service life into civilian life here in Western Australia. Because both our strategy, our veterans' strategy and our Defence and Defence Industry strategy recognise veterans and their families as a great asset, and people that we should try and attract and retain in Western Australia.
I'll come to the strategy in a moment, but are there any other key considerations which inform or guide the allocation of funds through the trust? Or things that you're seeking to achieve here in Western Australia?
Well, the board make assessment and determine the best use of the money. There is part of, there have been elements of fund allocation towards not just transitioning veterans, but also supporting those who might already have suffered as a consequence of trauma they've been exposed to in service. So one of the things we've done at the last election was allocate, outside the $1.3 million, an additional $430,000 to establish an assistance dog training program in Western Australia. The assistance dog program that's funded by DVA to deliver assistance dogs to veterans around the country utilizes trainers all on the east coast, there's none in Western Australia, and we wanted to rectify that.
I will come to that.
That's one of the things we've done.
I suppose one of the things I was getting at is, what is the level of coordination? In terms of thinking about who you distribute these funds to?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Are you thinking about a level of?
So, yeah, so we've, one of the other, I guess, informal guidance as a government objective we gave to the ANZAC Day Trust was, we would like to have fewer grants, aggregate them, fewer, bigger, and extend them over multiple years if possible to give certainty of funding to the service delivery agents. So whoever received the funds would know that they had multiple years, it was a larger amount so we could achieve more. Prior to that guidance, historically, this scheme would have given a lot of smaller grants to a lot of ex-service organisations mostly, and would be less, in my view, less impactful and less valuable.
Yeah, and why do you say that?
Because we wanted to have agencies or organisations make application for funding that would deliver a real service. And it requires a more sophisticated structure than a lot of, you know, there's a lot of ex-service organisations, not disparaging them in any way, but there are many, many ex-service organisations. And only the larger ones who've been around for a long time and have a structure behind them have the ability to deliver good governance and probity over public funds and the likelihood of success in delivery of services. So we've encouraged things like collaborations between big established ex-service organisations and smaller agile innovative service delivery. So one, for instance, is RSLWA have collaborated with a company called Working Spirit to provide placement of veterans with employers who want to employ veterans. And we've given them hundreds of thousands of dollars to establish that service. They're growing it, they've just gone live with an online portal to expand access for veterans. Last year, in their first year of operation, it wasn't even an entire year, they placed 114 veterans with employers. And what I've, I don't know whether this is replicated anywhere around other jurisdictions, but when I've gone to the ministers' meetings, they tend to talk about employment of veterans in the public sector. This is not that, we do, they're part of the opportunity for employment, but a lot of what we have in Western Australia is opportunity to place veterans with employers right across the private sector, and there's huge opportunities. And this is like a concierge service to put them directly with, take a veteran, find out what their interests and capabilities are, and then place them in the opportunity to speak to an employer who wants that type of person.
I'll come to some of the employment matters that the state are participating in or initiatives later. Can I just confirm, I think the nub of what you're saying though is that the disparate distribution of smaller grants are not effective, is that correct?
My observation was that in recent times, there's been a proliferation of ex-service organisations, all well-meaning, all motivated to assist, many of whom would think that they deliver a unique service. And, you know, they may or may not be valuable, and as I say, they're all well-meaning, not being disparaging of them. But what it results in, or has in my view resulted in, is a fragmentation of funding and also focus so that you have potential for far, far less impact with the programmes you're delivering with the money, because it's just, rather than concentrate on some effective services being done as in the most powerful way and effective way, the money would be spread to try and, I don't know, satisfy a lot of different people.
Different stakeholders. Now, thank you for that. Can I now turn to some questions about the state's veterans and families strategy? When was that strategy released?
Sorry?
When was the state's veteran and family strategy released?
It was under my predecessor, so Honourable Peter Tinley AM, and he launched it in 2019.
I think September 2019 is right?
Sounds right.
Ms. Dawson, feel free to jump in whenever you like. Am I correct that the strategy is one component of a broader Defence and Defence Industry's strategic plan?
Well, it's not part of it, but it was aligned with it. So we launched the Defence and Defence Industry Strategic Plan in 2018, and had it acknowledged veterans as being a valuable, potential valuable resource in the Defence Industry sector. This strategy was then launched and focused purely on veterans and families, and it aligned with the Defence and Defence Industry strategy.
Well, this plan is one of the six key work streams of that strategy, isn't it?
Yes, that's true.
And certainly the six Hillary's veterans issues and supporting families. And there was an action in the strategic plan to develop a specific strategy, which is the one that was launched in 2019 by Mr. Tinley.
And are you able to briefly summarise the purpose and key themes of the veterans and families strategy?
The purpose is to guide the activities of the veterans issues portfolio. And the strategies, there were five strategies. Firstly, recognise and support veterans and their families. Secondly, encourage and enable their ongoing participation and contribution to the broader community. Thirdly, understand who and where are Western Australian veterans and their interests and needs. Fourthly, commemorate the service and sacrifice to Australian service personnel. And finally, educate the broader community on the significance and impact of Australia's wars on our nation.
And within each of those themes, I think there are various actions that the state government committed to undertake. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did the state conduct any consultation prior to developing and implementing this strategy?
Yeah, it was before my time, but there was a veterans council, which had a range of representatives from different ex-service organisations on it, and they spoke directly to the minister's office.
In addition, there was also a deep consultation with RSLWA and Legacy WA, and through their memberships, they provided input to the strategic development.
They were both on the council.
Yes.
So were there any other ESOs that?
Yes.
There were others as well, roughly how many?
About a dozen, I think, but don't hold me to it.
And did they all provide submissions, or was it just?
I think it was more discussion and.
It was more a consultation process.
Conversations, rather.
And was any research conducted?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not, not formal research, no.
The Defence and Defence Industry Strategic Plan identified that the strategy will be developed in consultation with Defence and local governments. Did that occur?
I'm not sure, because I wasn't the minister, I couldn't tell you.
There was limited consultation with local governments at that time, it was really facilitated through the departments, and the Department of Communities was responsible at that stage for veterans' issues. In terms of broader consultation, it was really done through sort of the networks of RSL WA and Legacy WA. They did some consultation with Defence, but it was again informal, not research-based.
So there was some informal consultation with Defence. In hindsight, do you think it would have been good to have get, to have really coordinated that with Defence? Would there have been any benefit?
Possibly, you've got to remember, as I said at the outset, veterans' matters are not core business for state government. We do what we can, we're focused on delivering service of value and trying to identify potential gaps where we might feel a need. But ultimately, we don't have a huge resource in terms of staff or even funding, but our focus is on really delivering the best service we can with what resources we do have and trying to assist the federal agency.
I certainly appreciate that. Earlier, we were just, I mean, we're just talking about some ESOs that you consulted with, one was RSL WA. Just on that topic, can I ask, does your department routinely consult with ex-service organisations about veterans' matters in Western Australia?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
And so does my office.
And is that a monthly thing or a two, bimonthly or?
No, the, it's, it's more as necessary and on an ongoing basis. But I, in my office, we regularly meet with ex-service organisations, and it's not hard for them to get a meeting with us, that's not a difficult.
But it's, it's not programmed, it's more of an ad hoc consultation?
Well, I, we meet regularly with the ANZAC Day Trust trustee.
The Chair.
The Chair, to discuss applications they've received for grants and funding and how things are progressing. I meet with Defence regularly because I have the Defence Industry portfolio, so I meet with the Senior Military Officer Western Australia and the Commander 13 Brigade monthly. But I, we also have other contacts through other bodies that the Defence Industry portfolio holds. So we have Defence Industry Advisory Committee that has industry representatives, but the military personnel sit on as well, and they have regular meetings.
So do you feel that you get?
There's approximately 100 ESOs that are known in Western Australia, and there's about 28 that the manager for Veterans Issues within the Defence West team meets with quite regularly.
I do regularly meet with RSL WA and Legacy as the two primary ex-service organisations. But any of the other ESOs who want to meet with me, we are available and we do meet with them, but it's not a regular thing.
And the ANZAC Day Trust trustees, I think with feedback from the minister, meet regularly with the ESOs as well, given they're overseeing and managing the grants programmes, they're dealing with and interfacing quite frequently. And then I think through regular meetings with the Chair of the Trust and the trustees, the minister gets regular feedback through that process.
Has there been anything specific or anything sort of key that's been learned through those consultations, any sort of themes?
I, look, I do think the most significant thing that we've learned and then actioned is that the need to consolidate our, our funding and our resourcing of programmes and the number of our programmes to try and get the best and most effective outcomes. So we've done that, we'll monitor and watch, but the indications are that that works. So we've, we've now, we're actually doing things with the small funding that we have, which are very effective. And I think that, you know, that placement of assisting veterans to transition successfully and thereby avoiding becoming isolated and becoming vulnerable to any trauma they may have been exposed to, that's, that's one of the best things you can do, and it's looking like it works as a system of delivering that opportunity. So that's a good thing. We fund Legacy over three-year grant for a couple of programmes right around the country supporting widows and families. We'll watch how that goes, but they, they are, you know, established, known, capable organisation and they're delivering that service. And the third probably big one that we're doing is the support to the Andrew Russell Veterans Living Programme to try and establish that here in Western Australia.
I will come to that. What I might do now is move to ask you some questions about the implementation of the strategy, so we will move on to those matters that you've been discussing. Operator, can I please ask, do you display that strategy? So that's doc ID WAJ dot triple zero one dot triple zero one dot triple zero one at page triple zero eight. This is the part of the strategy dealing with understanding. And the strategy identified that, and you see it immediately following the heading understanding, are the words, "The absence of a definitive number of Western Australian veterans presents a challenge for service design and delivery." And then further down at the bottom of that column, it also identified that comprehensive, consistent and reliable data is essential to developing effective policies at all levels. Now, am I correct that elsewhere in the strategy, it was broadly estimated that in 2019, about 30,000 veterans resided in Western Australia?
Yes.
And to address this gap in profile of the veteran community, the strategy identified some actions that would be taken, and I think you see that in paragraphs 2.1 to 2.4 on the right part of that page, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, am I correct that the state government does not presently have any process by which it systematically or routinely captures interactions with veterans and veteran data?
Yes, but, you know, what, as I indicated, this, this was published in 2019, the actions we're taking, the ones I referred to with respect to funding a programme to transition veterans, happens subsequent to this publication. We clearly, we do identify veterans who are transitioning in Western Australia via that programme and then seek to place them into employment. So that is not a government agency doing that, but that is a government-funded activity. And the RSL and Working Spirit are increasing their links to Defence in Western Australia and the veterans' community to ensure that we capture as many of those people as possible.
I think I accept that you do have some data capturing mechanisms, but my understanding from your response was that there's no systematic or routine capturing of that data?
That is something that we are working to establish currently, both within sort of government and across government agencies, to look at data sharing sort of approach and framework and data capture so that we can, we can have more effective sort of records. It also comes down to individuals being willing to identify, and that's something that we're working through, how we'll manage that as well.
Well, you know, the other thing that has, happens is we have a Veterans Ministers' Meeting, like a Veterans Ministers' Council, and at those meetings, we have raised the potential benefit or value of the Federal Government's Transition Agency, can't remember then.
The Joint Transition Authority?
Yes, I've met, so they, the general in, who'd been appointed to lead that agency, attended the last ministers' meeting that I was at, and obviously, we suggested that would be good to collaborate so that as they identify people in their own process in Western Australia, if we are afforded access to that, you know, the data or the, actually, the contacts is really what we want, to ensure that at the very least, those veterans know that we exist and we have this system available to place them into work. So we would encourage that agency to collaborate with our Defence West.
We also rely on, you know, ABS data, census data, knowing that there are limitations with that.
What I'm talking about, so yeah, this is like, the data's one thing, but this is about practical placement of people. So all we want is the people's names and contacts, and, or at least them to know that our service is, exists. And so if the, if the Defence Transition Agency, as part of its transition support to veterans in Western Australia, just tells them to go to our site and contact our Working Spirit and RSL WA in, in part of their transition, that would be a really effective thing.
The other part of what I thought you were getting at was to say that you wanted to hear from Defence or the Joint Transition Authority, then you wanted a list of the names of veterans or?
Well, I, yeah, I guess we don't necessarily need them, but we need to know that they are told about us and our agency and as much as possible encouraged to make contact with that service provider.
Would that, would that data not assist you, though, to understand how many veterans are transitioning out of the Australian Defence Force?
Since those ministers' meetings, so we've, it's about 350 a year transitioning in Western Australia that we do know of.
Less than, it's closer to 250.
250, is it? 250, I thought it was.
But would that data be helpful or just that more reliable data?
It would be, but it's not going to change what we're doing with that, with that particular service. So if we managed to, we already placed 114 in the first year of operation of that service, and that was prior to it expanding in its capacity. Yeah, I guess it'd be interesting to find out the total number and what, so that would suggest we get about 50% if it's 250 that are transitioning.
I think the importance is.
Beyond that, I'm not sure that it's, you know, so like, looking at numbers is not necessarily a great, great additional assistance for us.
The data's helpful, but making the connections to the service providers and the local service providers that can actually help support, provide employment pathways, help relocate, settle, support families is probably more important, so they know how to access them, have the contact details and are made, they're actually given the introductory mechanisms to do that. We see that as more important. You need to understand the data absolutely to inform policy, but the connection certainly is veterans are transitioning, is important to make sure they know who to contact.
I suppose the importance of the data is this, isn't it? That if the state is not aware of the geographical locations or the number of veterans in Western Australia, how can it have any certainty that the services and funding that is being provided actually respond to the most pressing needs of those veterans?
Yeah, but, so we do, you know, we have those indicative numbers of 30,000 and 250 transitioning annually, but they don't all transition in Western Australia to Western Australia, so they might come from other states and transition into Western Australia, which might be a little complicated to identify. In the end, it's for the, you know, limited resources that we have, I think the main objective is to ensure that the service you're delivering works for the people that you deliver it to. Now, if then we identify that there's greater demand and we're not meeting it, yes, potentially that, obviously, we have an argument for putting more funds towards it, but I'm not sure that our spending our time with our two FTE trying to identify data is going to be the best use of the resources. That's something that federal government could do, and DVA as an agency and the transition agency could do, and then share the information, that would be good. But I'm not, I'm not as a priority going to be asking our people to be focused on that.
Well, it is a fundamental part of the strategy, and that's what we were looking at before, the understanding part of the strategy. Is that part perhaps just not as important as the other aspects of the strategy?
I think it's important, and I don't think we're saying, not saying it's not important. I think what we're saying is that we rely on working with DVA, we rely on the data that's available out there through census, through our public sector census data that we collect as well. So we do utilise the data, but we don't, I guess, get sort of caught in the data, we actually make sure that we're providing services to meet demand and meet the feedback and the issues that we're identifying through consultation with RSL WA, through the ANZAC Day Trustees, through talking to ESOs, through the Legacy WA as well. So we do tap into all of those things, and we do rely on information that does come from, from DVA. The more data would be helpful, as long as it's quality, data's only as good as the integrity and the quality of the data and the source of the data. So if it's good data, then yeah, it can definitely help.
So I think you were sort of saying the difficulty in part has been overcome by the 2021 census results, is that fair?
Yes.
Now, that data's been available in part?
In part, there's still limitations with census data.
That data's been available for some time now, has your departments ought to use that data in terms of developing policy?
Like, our focus is on delivering the service and just getting the job done. And it's, and to the extent that it is our job, it's not core business, but we are aiming to deliver an effective support to people, firstly, who are transitioning, primarily to people who are transitioning to encourage and achieve a successful transition, and then where we can, some additional services to support people who might not have achieved that and or might have become vulnerable. But that is Department of Veterans Affairs' job, not state government. And the, the strategy was written in 2019, we've moved since then, at that time, we had $300,000 a year, and now we've got 1.3 million, we're still, it's still relatively small, but it's focused on delivery of a service. And what I'll be asking as a minister is how effective is that service, what numbers are going through it, is it achieving the outcome, the objective, which was getting people jobs so that they successfully transition and don't become vulnerable to, you know, any issues that they might encounter?
Sorry, you just mentioned that the strategy was written in 2019, is it a living document?
It, look, it, it would need to be reassessed in light of changed circumstances and additional funding and our different focus. The Defence and Defence Industry Strategic Plan is the, is, you know, more comprehensive and links to the wider Defence Industry sector, and we're still using that, and that's going to change as well because the circumstance changes. It's all written before there was a strategic review, before there was an ORCUS agreement, before a whole range of factors changed.
So it may need to be updated at some point.
Yes.
I can confirm, though, to your earlier question, that our manager of Veterans Issues in Defence West, Jamie Cooper-Maitland, he has interrogated the data, and Jamie does look at the data, but I think importantly, use it to indicate sort of and confirm and validate sort of some of the things that we're doing. So he has interrogated the census data.
Thank you.
Despite its limitations.
We were talking earlier about the, well, just now about the census data, are you supportive of the census question which seeks to identify serving Defence members as veterans?
Yes.
Yes.
And is there another question or any other question that you would like to see asked by the census? Perhaps by way of example, I can give you one that occurred to me, a question which asks ex-serving ADF members to indicate their most recent year of discharge, for example?
Oh, yeah, that might be helpful, yeah.
Any other, any other questions?
To be honest, hadn't given it any thought. I think adding in sort of to identify as a veteran has actually been incredibly helpful. But if there's further enhancements, but yeah, certainly, we would consider the opportunity to provide input to a process to add questions, that would be great.
Might now move on to discussing some of the more specific services that the state of Western Australia provide. At the outset, though, can I ask, what do you see as the primary challenges faced by veterans in Western Australia?
I think veterans generally, just by the nature of. I think veterans generally, just by the nature of their service, lack or can lack a network outside of the military. So that when they transition from the environment of the military to, into the private sector, they won't necessarily know or have the ability to reach out to people to, you know, assist with that process. So that's why we want to try and focus on delivering, essentially creating a network for them. So a, other people who've just never, who've, who've just been in the private sector or even the public sector for their entire lives, they would have already just generated a network of contacts just by virtue of their, their working life. And we're going to fill that gap by creating one for them directly with the service that we provide.
I think just to add to that, the other aspect is just translation of skills. So building the network is really important, but understanding how the skills and the training that they've done in the ADF actually applies in a, in a different industrial setting and helping them to build their resumes, to be able to sort of, you know, speak the same language so that industrial sort of employers can actually sort of understand how they'll benefit their organisations, so.
That's, that's one of the other tasks for, for that service that RSLWA and Working Spirit are doing. It's actually not so much helping the veteran do it, it's translating that for them and then telling the employers what their skill set actually equates to in civilian terms. And that is, yeah, that's a reasonable observation as far as challenges they confront. Not always, the military doesn't always, the skill set or the experience that they've accrued may not be understood by the private sector.
And they're some of the most highly trained individuals and huge assets to the private sector once they are employed and into that pathway. I think that gets validated pretty quickly.
It's about tapping into that.
It is about building the understanding certainly of those industrial employers, of what the training that has been undertaken and the sorts of work that has been conducted and how that applies in that industrial setting. Once, once that's done, it's much easier to connect them to job pathways.
Can I turn to the issue of veteran homelessness? One of the documents in the tender list is a supplementary submission from the state, which contains some important analysis about veteran homelessness in Western Australia. Operator, can you please display doc ID WAJ, that's the one, thank you, at page dot zero two zero five? Now, I note that we only received the document yesterday evening, but the commissioners will see that it is signed by Rebecca Brown on twenty-four May two thousand and twenty-three, which is yesterday. Minister, have you seen this document and did you make any contribution to it?
I've seen it and no, I didn't make any contribution to it.
Do you disagree with any aspect of it?
Yeah, look, I, I'm not being critical of the submission, but I just think that a lot of the analysis with respect to veterans homelessness and in particular rough sleeping is based on some pretty dubious data.
Come to that in a second. Ms Dawson, did you, had, did you make a contribution to that?
I reviewed the document as it went through the approval process, yes.
So you agree with its content?
I agree that it points to data that is quite old data and I think it's trying to articulate that the facts sort of that might indicate that WA has a significant issue in this area are not validated through the data at all. And in our real experience, and as I'm sure the minister will attest, the, the issues around homelessness is not as significant. It draws upon some data from a couple of years ago, around eight.
Two thousand fourteen or fifteen.
Yeah, so it's quite, quite dated, about eight thousand. Most of the data is related to, fifty percent of the population of the eight thousand is from Queensland.
Okay, perhaps before we start discussing that aspect of it, can I just establish a few things and then we can talk about it? The two thousand and nineteen Australian Housing and Urban Research Institute final report identified that homelessness was an issue that disproportionately affected recently transitioned veterans. And it was said to be about five point three percent of veterans versus one point nine percent of the general population. Operator, can you please display document ID STU dot quadruple zero dot zero zero two dot nine nine seven six? While the operator's bringing it up, I think you've seen this document before. It's a very recent study, which consistently with the report that I just mentioned, also suggests that a disproportionate number of veterans in Australia are sleeping rough. And it's often, which is often referred to as primary homelessness. And the study also draws a link between homelessness and that being a risk factor for suicide among veterans. Can I pause just there and I'd like to return to the state's supplementary submission, if I can, operator? Which is WAJ dot triple zero two dot triple zero two dot zero two zero two at dot zero two zero five? It was the page that was just being displayed. I apologize, we're having some technical issues. What I might do is, I might just direct you, if you have it in front of you, to the particular page.
I think so.
And what I'll do is I'll just read it out. So it's the page with the signature on it, Rebecca Brown's signature.
Twenty-fourth.
And it's that third paragraph down that starts with, with that said.
Yeah.
So I'll just read it out because we've just established there are two previous, well, there's a report and a study that talks about veteran homelessness being a, something that disproportionately affects that cohort.
Sorry, I object to that. I'm just looking at the document my friend's referring to. And in the first paragraph of the second page, it suggests the opposite.
Sorry, which document is that?
The supplementary submission. You referred to also a moment ago and then referred to various studies that suggest a disproportionate number of veterans being homeless. And I might be wrong, but it's not how I read it.
No, that's okay. You're on. The two that I was referring to is the two thousand and nineteen Australian Housing and Urban Institute final report. The second document that I was referring to was the study, which we had difficulties bringing it up before. The third document, which I'm now going to, is the state's supplementary submission. And I'll just read out.
And I'm sorry, that's my point.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that it is, that the state is accepting that there is a disproportionate number of things. I'm, I'm confirming that that's what the two previous reports said, the final report and then the study. So I'll just read out, sorry, what you're saying. So with that said, it appears that there is a nexus between veteran homelessness and suicidality. This is a national tragedy that should be addressed with a degree of urgency. It is the state government's view that veterans' welfare requires funding from the Australian government and that this issue requires close collaboration with the states and territories. So with that background in mind, can I ask, in terms of Western Australia, do you agree that homelessness is an issue which disproportionately affects veterans?
I, I, at the outset, I'd say I agree that homelessness is, you know, a, a serious vulnerability and, and likely to result in people being vulnerable to suicide. So, you know, that link is, I'd accept. Um, I'm, it's hard, we haven't been able to identify a number, you know, or a level of homelessness in, in veterans. I can tell you, we've, in recent times, so post that's the studies upon which this submission is based, the references that you made, post those surveys in, in recent times. So in the last twelve months to twenty-four months, we have done in Perth and some of the major urban centres, actual by name measurement of rough sleepers. So where agencies have identified people by name. So it's, it's very, I think, probably more rigorous than those original references.
Can I just stop there?
Yeah.
Just jump in. Is that your department?
No, so I've asked the, the Minister for Homelessness and, and Housing, his agencies have conducted these assessments and, and they've moved towards providing direct support to rough sleepers. And they've, the numbers are far lower than some of the numbers that were referenced in those original reports. So, but that aside.
Can I ask?
What they haven't asked is if anyone's a veteran. So they, and what I can tell you though is just, since I got the job and I know my predecessor did the same, we have indicated to all of our ex-service organisations, in fact, anyone in the community, that if they identify any veteran who is rough sleeping, they should bring it directly to us so that we can deal with it. And I haven't, only in the last two years, I've had one, I've been notified of one veteran rough sleeper. And the senior Department of Veterans Affairs officer in Western Australia, Peter King, personally went and talked to him and sought the opportunity to get him housing. And it, it was rejected and wasn't because of the availability of it. It was just he didn't want to have a house. But we haven't been able to identify veterans sleeping rough that reflect the numbers in those surveys or that, those reports.
Just in terms of the veteran sleeping rough, is it, is it fair to say however, that there is just no complete data picture on that?
No, yeah, it's true. And I, I don't, I, I'm not sure, you know, I'm just saying it's, I'd be dubious or I'd be sceptical about the numbers that are claimed in that report with respect to Western Australia. Because I don't know, I've not seen any indication of those, that sort of level of rough sleeping in the veteran community. That aside, veteran, you know, secondary homelessness or whatever the correct terminology is, people couch surfing or, or, you know, moving in un, um, insecure accommodations. Who would know? That's a very difficult thing to ascertain. And we have an, we have an initiative to address that in Western Australia. We are supporting via the ANZAC Day Trust, the Andrew Russell Veteran Living Programme being established here. It's demonstrated to work in South Australia. It, in particular in South Australia, they address something we do know that, that exists and we know it. You know, we can look at the numbers. They address veterans who've been incarcerated in, and then as they leave the prison system, of the Andrew Russell Veteran Living Programme in South Australia provides them with support, supported accommodation to transition them into work and, and regular accommodation. We, we know that around eighty veterans are incarcerated in Western Australia. So they will be vulnerable in that first year of leaving incarceration to challenges of finding housing and, and being, you know, falling back into the pathway they were on prior to, prior to entering prison. So we would like to establish a similar programme to South Australia here. Kylie Russell and the Royal Australian Air Force Association have got a plan. We're supporting it with their administrative costs and their business case to go forward on delivering that service here. But I would say the one big gap we have here, we're, we're supporting as much as we can. Rafa have identified land for building accommodation. They've got plans for it. They've got in-kind support from builders and design architects and the like. What we need is a contribution for capital to get that programme off, off the ground. And that's what I'd like the federal government to do. That would be good if they contributed to that outcome.
Some Commonwealth funding for this.
Because we'll then, we'll then support via the ANZAC Day Trust, the delivery of that service in terms of its operational costs. And uniquely, you know, it's different than South Australia. They will, they have as part of their proposal, an actual academic study to determine the success of the outcome. So that would be a really valuable contribution. And it would be good if, you know, I understand the difficulty Commonwealth has with recurrence funding for programmes, but this is, that's not what we're after in this case from them. What we'd like from them is a capital contribution to get the buildings done. And then we'll support, we'll sustain them with part of their, their ongoing recurrent costs.
Got some questions about the ARVL model. Can I just step back though, just to complete the data piece? In your response, you refer to a more accurate picture being revealed by the two thousand and twenty-one census data. Do you know what that data says about veteran homelessness in Western Australia? Roughly how many are estimated to be homeless veterans?
The census data from that, no.
Would it surprise you if I told you it was about a hundred and eighty?
Yeah, because I would say it's not accurate. Is, are you talking about rough sleeping or?
No, no, just overall homelessness. So it could be primary, it could be primary or secondary homelessness.
No, probably wouldn't. I mean, that, I, I still, it, it's a really difficult thing to ascertain because whether that's accurate or not.
It's just a lack of overall data.
Totally reliant on someone being in a residence on the night of the census and saying that they're a veteran who's homeless. That's, you know, it may be much bigger.
Yeah, there is a lack of robust data available.
We were just talking about the Andrew Russell Veteran Living Centre in South Australia. And you were saying that there's got to be a similar model here. In South Australia, the model has sixty-nine units across the state.
Yeah.
And some, some of those units are designated as emergency accommodation and others as affordable housing units. What is the model that is being adopted in Western Australia?
We're going to phase it. I mean, that programme's been going for seven years. So they're really mature and established. We want to get a programme up and running and it would be the emergency element of it that we initially go with. Because that way we can phase, we would require smaller accommodate, um, capacity in accommodation. And then we could stage it. As I understand it, that's what Kylie and Rafa are proposing.
That, that is correct. To start with about sixteen sort of self-contained units for emergency housing for as long as it's required. And then to phase and build up to the next stage, evaluating at each step what's required to fund for the next step. And I think the initial funding asked is about ten million, I think, for the first phase.
Yeah, and the beauty of the Rafa organisation is that they are one of the biggest housing, supported housing providers in the state. They are really effective, long-term, established and capable. And so it could potentially be a model whereby they, they transition them out of the, the ARVL scheme into other Rafa-supported accommodation and potentially further afield or even stay just going into the Rafa-supported accommodation in other locations.
And do you know roughly how many units or emergency accommodation units?
Sixteen would be the starting point.
And when will that, I know you've called for Commonwealth funding, but roughly when do you think that facility might be?
It is totally reliant on the capital funding. So we, they have some contributions from the private sector. We've committed via the ANZAC Day Trust to covering their, currently their business case and planning activities.
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I think it is, there about.
In one financial year. We've also indicated, and it would, you know, be subject to the ANZAC Day Trust Board assessing it, but they're very supportive of this initiative. So we've indicated that if they get established, then our, we could have a recurrent contribution via the trust towards their administrative costs around, you know, they have, they plan to have a live-in caretaker at the site. So that would, the cost of that would probably end up being met by the ANZAC Day Trust.
So they have, they have a prospectus and they're, they have approached philanthropists, approached organisations like Lottery West, Western Australia, and also will be approaching the Commonwealth as well to support the funding asked that's needed. But the intent is, assuming they can get the funding they need, they would like to be operational by two thousand and twenty-five.
In your response to the commission's notice to give, you mentioned that the Royal Australian Air Force Association has commenced designing facilities, we were just discussing. But they've incorporated a number of lessons derived from the South Australian Programme. What lessons are those?
Links to the wraparound services that are provided and available as well. So it's not just the standalone sort of housing and emergency services, but what other support services need to be provided, to provide employment pathways, to provide maybe mental health access, support services access, those sorts of things as well, so.
And I think the mix of the people in the facility. I think they've, they've learned some lessons about the type of person that's suitable and most likely to be successful or alternatively be disruptive and, and not succeed.
And, and the design of the actual. And, and the design of the actual units too, what they should look like.
Yeah, the nature of the design was a.
Was a really important one.
Um, would be supportive to the, the people who, uh, go there, so they've adjusted their design.
Now, in your response, you also say that the ARVL housing initiative has generated encouraging data. Just wondering what that data is.
Well, it steered us towards asking how many are in prison. Because that's what they did in, there's another programme in South Australia where they, they have, uh, inside the, the, um, prison system. They have, um, established, it's like a support network with prison officers who are veterans and, and prisoners who are veterans and then establish contact with them in advance of them departing the prison system and hopefully transitioning via the, uh, ARVL scheme, the ARVL programme. That was one to something we hadn't, uh, we hadn't actually asked. Um, corrective services, how many we had in there. Again, it's relying on them self-identifying, so it's not necessarily accurate, the actual number. But we know that at least it's, at least around eighty.
Operator, can I please ask that you display the state supplementary submission? WAJ dot triple zero two dot triple zero two dot zero two zero two dot zero two zero three. Could I just ask that you highlight the paragraph three on that page, commencing with the words, "The WA Government is of the View"? So there you speak about the Australian Government accruing a moral obligation to assist veterans constitutionally. And then you talk about homelessness must be delivered in close collaboration with state governments along with adequate funding. Can you please tell the commissioners what you see as the division of responsibility between the federal government and your government in terms of this issue?
In terms of veterans homelessness?
Yes.
I'd look, at state level, we'll, you know, we have the, the responsibility to address homelessness. And so without differentiating between veterans or any other cohort, um, we're, you know, focused on delivering service to homelessness. Uh, the, the veterans element of our homelessness support is, uh, in addition to what we do. But all the veterans are eligible for accessing all of our other services and, and every other bit of our spend doesn't, doesn't, um, omit or exclude them. So, um, I'm not sure what you're getting at. And so I would say, you know, we have a, a really big focus on addressing the, the challenge of homelessness and providing additional housing and support to people who are vulnerable to, to ending up in particularly rough sleeping, but also, um, uh, in vulnerable circumstances around homeless, homelessness. But, uh, it doesn't exclude veterans. They're, they're absolutely central to that. The things we've talked about are in addition to that and they're very, um, focused on veterans.
So I might leave the issue of housing and move on to the custodial setting. A related issue to veteran homelessness concerns the incarceration of veterans. Now, the study that we were discussing before, being that's out of the trenches study, which I couldn't call up, suggested that the history of incarceration was more prevalent among homeless veterans than in non-veterans. Can I ask, is that an issue that the state is alive to or considering?
Yeah, I, I couldn't confirm that or not. I, I just know that there are veterans in the, in incarceration. It's kind of, it's not counterintuitive to suggest that they might be vulnerable to it at a higher rate, but I'm not, I can't confirm that.
Do you know how many veterans are incarcerated?
Roughly eighty, but that's self-identification and, and we don't, you know, we can't confirm that. That's the finite number.
Turn to the initiatives in Western Australia. Uh, I understand that a pilot programme is underway at Carnet Prison and that's on the initiative of the Manager Prisoner Employment Programs and Transitional Services. Is that correct?
Uh, look, I, um, that programme, I'd temper, um, any excitement about that. It's a very localised, individual-focused, um, initiative whereby, uh, you know, there was a prison officer that, um, sought to establish, um, uh, an initiative. But, uh, it's not like a, a formal programme that's delivered across the system or anything of that nature.
No, it was a very informal, unfunded, initiated by one individual who saw some benefit from some Aboriginal yarning circles and sought to initiate those, um, a couple of years ago. Uh, and since then, uh, and certainly earlier this year, we've been sort of leveraging from some of the work that South Australia have been doing in the corrective system. Um, and we've had some briefings from, from, um, their relevant agency to our relevant agency. And we've also included the individual who was running those yarning circles. So we're now looking at what that might look like for Western Australia.
So what does that pilot programme, what is it designed to achieve?
As I say, it's not a, it wasn't one that we initiated or had any oversight of. Uh, it's a purely local initiative by an individual in that particular, um, prison farm.
So is the state looking to fund that at all or perhaps not?
Well, what, what we're focused on with respect to corrective services, um, is the, uh, trying to replicate something like the Chris Tilly Programme in South Australia. So we'll consider, you know, it's early days, but we're considering whether that might be of value. Where, um, veterans who are working in the prison system as prison officers or other staff, uh, engage with, um, prisoners who are veterans. And then it's linked to their post-release and, and the pathway that they, um, they then follow. Supporting them whilst they're in there and then, um, trying to link them up, uh, with services as they depart. So they avoid the likelihood of recidivism. But very early days on, on, um, our assessment, we're, it's, we've talked to the Corrective Services Minister and his agency about Chris Tilly's programme and they're looking at it. But, uh, with respect to our, our focus, uh, it will be trying to link people up with ARVL. We get established, ARVL established and then link people up so that they, they don't, um, there's no gap when they depart the prison system and, and the ARVL programme.
When will a decision likely be made about whether or not to proceed with implementing the Chris Tilly programme?
I, it's not, I couldn't really say because.
I think those discussions have only just commenced. Um, I think the first conversations were in March this year. So they'll be ongoing, I think, over the coming months to sort of look at, um, what's required and, uh, when that might commence. So we're not at this stage able to say when it would officially commence. I think we're learning at the moment and trying to understand how it would need to operate, um, in, in our systems.
Is this also an area where the state would benefit from Commonwealth funding or?
We, we have, um, written to the federal minister, um, asking for their consideration of support for trying to establish a programme like Chris Tilly in Western Australia.
Certainly to have the resources to oversee and implement the programme.
Can I? And what, what kind of funding are we talking about?
I, I think we requested resourcing for, um, for two to three, um, to help facilitate the programme, to get it, get it established, um, and set up and running. That's people, yes, resource funding.
So can I move to employment then and what the state's doing in that space?
Yep.
Am I correct that one of the key themes of both the Defence and Defence Industry Strategic Plan, but also the Veterans and Families Strategy is veteran employment?
Yes, absolutely.
And are you aware of the current levels of unemployment amongst veterans in Western Australia?
No.
What about the number of veterans seeking to access employment training?
Employment training?
Training or of our system of, um, so we have, there's a couple of initiatives. So we have the, um, we have the one I referred to earlier, which is about placement. And then we did a hundred and fourteen last year and we're hoping to grow that. I, I would expect measly to double that this year. We'll see how they go. We have another programme which is, um, established, um, do you know what year it started?
Two years ago, I would think.
So.
Just, can I just ask, just for the benefit of the commissioners, can we just start with just sort of perhaps each initiative? So is the one you were talking about just before, is that the Working Spirit and RSLWA partnership? Okay. So are you able to just briefly explain to the commissioners how that partnerships, how that partnership assists veterans to find employment?
So, um, Working Spirit was, uh, essentially before we supported it, a one-woman business that, um, identified employers who might be willing to, who wanted to employ veterans, who were open to employing veterans. And then, uh, organised events to bring veterans who were interested in transitioning or already were out of the, of, uh, the service into a room with those potential employers and tried to place them together. What we've done is, uh, boost the, boost that whole process with funding and link them up with, um, RSLWA to provide, so RSLWA now provide the administrative support, the, um, the financial management and the, the property around, uh, the taxpayers' money. And Working Spirit are free to deliver and she's, she's grown her business to deliver support to veterans in a whole range of areas. So it's, um, identifying potential employers, putting them together. It's translating their qualifications and skill sets and experience to civilian equivalents.
Regiment building, interviewing skills.
Element of assisting them to successfully transition and, um.
How many veterans has that assisted in the last?
Assisted in the last twelve months, it was, it was a hundred and fourteen, but it wasn't the full twelve months it was operating for.
It's about half, last half of last year, a hundred and fifteen veterans were supported.
That's actually placed people with jobs, um, real positions.
Through the TEP Job Portal?
Well, the portal only launched on NZC Day, so, um, it, this is before that. So the portal should boost the availability or the, the, um, capacity of the whole programme to identify veterans who might be interested and, and draw them into the support of the service and, and deliver better outcomes. So we should get bigger numbers.
Just briefly, are you able to tell the commissioners what the TEP Job Portal is?
It's, it's essentially, uh, an online version of, um, the service that was being delivered. It's, it's to, to make it easy for veterans to, um, to make contact and, and establish the connection and start the process for, of being supported by Working Spirit and RSLWA to find employment.
It's got tools available on it for veterans to access from anywhere, so they don't have to be in metropolitan Perth, they can access it.
Well, also we want to steal them from other states, so if we get them to, they can apply from Queensland or New South Wales or Victoria and come here.
And employers can load jobs up there too, so.
It's like, um, Seek, Seek on steroids, but just for veterans.
Good way to describe it.
It's better than Seek.
I, I, I hope it is. In terms of another initiative, I understand that the city of Jundalup Council is recently committed to developing a veterans employment programme. Uh, am I correct that Defence West is also involved in, in the development of that programme?
Yeah, I think that, uh, Defence West is supporting it. It's, it's, um, it's, you know, it's commendable. It's, um, it's, uh, local government have, have witnessed what we were doing with our, our veterans transition efforts by RSLWA and, um, Working Spirit. And they've essentially, um, moved to establish the same sort of thing, but for placement of people in Jundalup, which is, uh, and primarily, I think, in their own workforce, but also, uh, you know, potentially that. I, I think mostly focused on their own workforce. So they're going to say, okay, we are a potential employer. We'd like to get veterans here. And they've got their own little version of, um, of what we're doing statewide.
They are looking to try and create local government pathways, so they'd be one of the first to do that. So Defence West are certainly working with them, but it's very early days again. They only passed a council motion, I think, in February to proceed. Uh, so we're now in the process of developing up what that would look like. It's very much, yeah.
It would link with our other, our others, because they'd just be another employer. You know, so Working Spirit would identify them as an employer. They could just tap into potential employees. Um, but it's, I think what that, that, um, refers to is their, in, their intention to actually elevate veterans as a source of, uh, employees as a, as a priority. They will say, we have as a priority employing, being a, a welcoming employer for veterans.
And it creates a great opportunity to then work with other local governments once we've got this one up and running. And, you know, working locally helps people, then they're familiar with all of the services, access points, all those sorts of things. Um, so we're looking to, you know, see how it can grow.
Well, yeah, just picking up on that. So in your response, you say that this will serve as a template for other local governments.
Yeah.
Have you engaged with other local governments about this?
Oh, look, I, I think what you do here is you'd watch, um, see, uh, challenges they encounter, successes they achieve. And then we could easily go from this one council, we could get before the entire association of local governments in Western Australia who meet regularly and are easily accessed by even, you know, they have, um, virtual meetings regularly. Uh, we could then deliver a, um, a package or a, a presentation to them about what Jundalup achieved and the benefits and, um, encourage them to get on board. But in many respects, they're just another employer, just like, you know, the resources sector or defence industry or state government. But, uh, this, it's a good initiative and it, and it will demonstrate hopefully the benefit to local governments. So we can encourage them to get on, participate.
But certainly a number of the local governments along the Kwanzaa sort of rocking ham strip are very interested to sort of see how this develops. And there's a high concentration of defence industry employers down there as well, that already employ a lot of veterans, but, um, and, and they want to learn from that too. So there's interest. Um, but the ministry is right, we'll work with the local government association to kind of expand this at the right time.
And is that coordination, do you think that coordination between state and then local governments to be very important in the space of veteran issues?
I would, I would encourage, you know, they're a big employer in the state, there's a lot of them still. And, um, any, any, uh, additional effort they can do in, um, offering opportunities for veterans would be, would be beneficial.
Fantastic.
We'll encourage them. I think it's great to have a, it's good to have a model. So it's good if Jundalup demonstrate, they might identify specific, um, jobs within their, their structure that are most suitable for veterans, uh, or something of that nature, or any challenges that they confront whilst they're doing their programme. Then we can, once we know that, we can, um, tell everybody else and encourage them to participate.
Just briefly, I'll touch on dives. Um, now, I understand that's a funding for scholarships for veteran training.
Yes, so it's about, um, skills, filling a skills gap for people who are, uh, veterans who might, um, have identified a job opportunity within the defence industry sector in Western Australia, but not have all the skill sets that they require. Um, they have the opportunity to access a scholarship of up to five thousand dollars to fill that, that skills gap. So we allocated four hundred thousand dollars over three years towards that. It's just part of, um, a, a wider, um, defence industry training, um, funding initiative for the state. Have, we committed about thirty million dollars towards skills training for the defence industry in WA and that's, that's part of it.
Is the five thousand dollar scholarship, is that a full scholarship? Is that enough to get them the additional training or is it just a contribution towards whatever training?
Well, in many cases it is enough. I've seen, um, examples where it is enough because they're not, um, in many, in a lot of times, they're, they've already got a, a larger, you know, they've got a lot of experience. Then it might be just a certification around, uh, you know, some paraprofessionals, um, qualification that they require just to, to get them across the line in terms of being certified to conduct a task. So, um, an example we had was, um, I'm trying to remember the, uh, there was somebody who, uh, ended up getting a certification to be able to, uh, go out and be a, uh, do career placement for defence industry. And it was, five thousand dollars was enough for her to do it and, um.
So I understand that the scheme exhausted its allocation for funding for the two thousand and twenty-three financial year quite early. And that was in January, two thousand and twenty-three?
There's greater, uh, demand than our allocation, but we'll look at increasing the funding to it.
So you're looking at increasing the funding to fill that gap?
Yeah, well, as I said, there's, it's part of, um, the wider contribution of the state government towards training at the moment for defence industry is about thirty million. Um, a lot of our courses in Western Australia, the TAFE courses are either for this sector, either free or heavily subsidised. So, um, we already, and, and veterans obviously are eligible for, you know, those, those opportunities for training. But this is specifically targeting, um, transition and, and the, filling the gap. So it, it's clearly successful and good and, and popular, so we'll. So it's clearly successful and good and popular, so we'll look towards increasing the funding.
It's very much focused at top-up skills to give them sort of, you know, direct entry pathways into employment. So it's run through the Jobs and Skills Centre in Rockingham and partnered with South Metro TAFE, who's an award-winning defence industry sort of training provider. So we try to connect the ecosystem together and then also through the Jobs and Skills Centre, link it to direct employment pathways as well.
I'll just ask one final question on employment before moving on. In your response to this commission, you mentioned that each state and territory has a different approach to veteran employment? And what I wanted to ask is, is that a problem that needs to be addressed?
I'm not sure it's a problem. I think we should all share knowledge and seek to replicate success. And so that it's not, I wouldn't say it's necessarily an issue that couldn't be addressed through our regular ministerial council meetings. So when Minister Keo calls us all together, we all share initiatives. I'm looking forward to talking about some of the ones that we've talked about today at the next meeting because they were only just being implemented when we had our last meeting. We've now got some results from things like the Working Spirit.
Programme.
Employment Training.
Totally, yeah.
Transition Programme. But there's, as we, the next meeting, we'll be able to say, you know, we've had these successes and we'll be able to confirm the benefit of them. And then other jurisdictions can look at that. We may see something that they're doing that we're not doing and adopt them.
There's also a Commonwealth States and Territories Committee, which our manager for Veterans Issues participates in, so that's only recently been formed. And I think there's more sharing occurring between each of the jurisdictions about programmes that are being run. And I think that's actually a good thing. I think people should, learning from what can be done. And if there's programmes that are effective and you want to scale them, then Commonwealth could support and help it to scale some of these things.
I think there'd be an opportunity for, instead of, say, the Defence Transition Agency trying to replicate something that we're doing, they could just contribute to it or join and collaborate on it and magnify the impact. So it might be something like Dives or it might be something like the Employment Transition Programme that we're running, already established, got a demonstrably successful and robust process for managing taxpayers' funds. That might be a good opportunity, rather than replicate it by establishing a whole new administrative process in WA. They could just align themselves with our one.
Just in terms of the evaluation piece that you were just mentioning, Miss Dawson. So in the response to this commission's notice to give, the state says that the initiatives that we've been discussing here this morning are in their formative phases and consequently there is no evaluation data. What steps will the state now take to evaluate each of the initiatives we've been discussing to determine their success and whether to continue to fund them?
So similar to other programmes we run for any other sort of part of government, we do run structured evaluation programmes. So typically after, you know, around a four-year period of operation, we'll sort of evaluate the performance and implications and the outcomes of the programme and look at the investment that's been made and look at sort of cycling through for further budget submission, so to help with the budget sort of process in case. So there's a structured evaluation process that we usually adopt, usually done independently as well, so that we can make sure that, you know, this, again, robust data is factored into that process.
If it's a programme that's being funded by the ANZAC Day Trust, the trust will assess whether or not they delivered on the outcomes that the business case they submitted identified. So in terms of placement of people, if they, and they would have, in their business case, suggested that they could place a number of people and achieve the programme that you would successfully transition, the board of the trust will look at that and see if the service has been delivered as proposed. It's really relatively small funding, but getting a big return. And so you don't want to waste a lot of our resources on analysis. We already have the people who established, you know, who gave the grant, they can do the determination of whether or not it's delivered and they'll provide that report to me as the minister and they will give us a recommendation as to whether or not they continue funding it.
Thank you. Can I move on, just given the time, to discussing your interactions with the Commonwealth? And you've mentioned this a couple of times this morning. Can I ask that the operator please display the Veterans and Families Strategy, which is doc ID WAJ dot triple zero one dot triple zero one dot triple zero one at dot zero 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 nine? So this is the third theme of the strategy and I'll paraphrase, but you'll see that it refers to the importance of the Western Australia's government's role in ensuring that, ensuring both that the services it provides, including those funded by DVA, meet the needs of veterans and their families, and also that the services provided by DVA and the government complement rather than replicate one another. And to achieve this, you'll see that in paragraph 3.4 of the strategy in the right-hand column, it requires the state government to work collaboratively with the federal government to improve service delivery to veterans. So pausing there, can you please explain for the commissioners the identified problem or problems with service delivery to veterans in Western Australia that this element of the strategy is seeking to address?
I think the main intent is to avoid us trying to replicate something that the federal agency is doing and they're probably going to have far more res, well, they have far more resources than we ever will in delivering some of their services and some of their programmes. So we're trying to avoid duplicating that and try and identify gaps that might have been left. One of the things, you know, because it, you know, as I keep saying, it's not our core business, very small, even though we have significantly increased the funding, it's relatively small. So we want to get the best return from that spend. One of the things we identified was that, as I said earlier, there's no assistance programme, dog programme trainers in Western Australia. So we want to, we're going to fund establishing somebody to deliver that service and then we'll probably, by the ANZAC Day Trust, fund a number of dogs on an annual basis. But ideally, the DVA wouldn't continue to fund trainers on the East Coast to deliver dogs to WA. They'd provide funding to that trainer in Western Australia to enhance the numbers and meet whatever demand there is. That's an indication of the sort of thing. And it's not really sophisticated, it's just clearly there are some things that they do and they will do much better than us and we just can't, we don't want to compete, we want to try and help. The other one, I would say very much, I'd refer to back to the ARVIL initiative. If we can get that running, I think that fills a bit of a gap. And it's not DVA's fault because it's not their actual responsibility, really.
Can I ask that the operator please display doc ID WAJ dot triple zero two dot triple zero one dot zero zero three one at dot zero zero three eight? This is the state's response, not the supplementary one, though. Can I just ask that you highlight the top part of the page above the words evaluation and cost? So these are the issues, as I understand it, that the state has identified with DVA delivery of grants direct to community groups without reference to the state government? Are you able to briefly speak to each of these issues, please, and provide perhaps some practical examples of the issues? And I know you've just done that with the guide dogs, but...
I don't know, I'd provide individual examples, but what I would say is what I, as I referred to earlier, that the, some of the grants programmes administered by DVA tend to be fragmented and in an effort to spread the spend to a large number of either service providers or ex-service organisation applicants. And I'd suggest that that's not as effective use of the funding as aggregating and having fewer and larger grants for bigger service over an extended period of time. So when they do that, when they do annual grants rounds and they're small, people have to go back and apply annually and that consumes resources and time and it's not necessarily effective. But I know, I'm not, when...
I'm not sure we can give some specific examples, but I think it goes back to the earlier point that, you know, there's around 100 ESOs that we know in WA. Each of those require administration, they're not all sustainable and people start accessing the services when there's lack of continuity. It actually can create issues when they shut down. So I think the minister through the ANZAC Day Trust, as he said before, we've been trying to sort of, you know, consolidate so that we can get scale and we can have better longevity. So the continuity of service provision is really important. And then I think working with the Commonwealth to make sure that we're not duplicating effort in areas, but we're being complementary to each other or where we're sort of adding funding into programmes that are actually working really effectively and delivering the services that veterans need and their families need.
We'll come to the collaboration in a moment, but can I ask, do you think that those issues that were just on the screen, are they common to each state or territory?
Yeah, I think that's something from discussions at ministerial council. That's something everyone experiences.
So can I move to the implementation of this part of the strategy then? And sort of start by asking, what specific steps has your department taken to improve federal and state collaboration on veterans' issues since the implementation of this strategy?
So I think this is where the participation in the Commonwealth States and Territories Committee is really important and it is a new structure. So I think that regular participation in those meetings and contributing to those meetings, the ministerial sort of council that comes together as well, I think is another important structure that's in place. And then certainly, and I don't recall the name, but I know our manager for Veterans Issues is working with counterpart in Victoria and also someone in the DVA organisation to look particularly at employment. So where they've identified there's a potential partnership collaboration approach there that's come from discussions at the Commonwealth States and Territory Committee. So I think those sort of structures really help.
Well, just in terms of those structures, how many meetings of the Commonwealth State and Territory Committee have occurred over the last three years?
I would say about 10 maybe, yeah, over 10.
And in terms of the meetings of veteran ministerial councils?
So there was, since I had the job, only, which is two years. So there was one under the previous government and one, I know, two under the previous government, one of which was virtual and one in person in Victoria. So, yeah, so we've had three.
Three over the last couple of years?
Yes.
And is the...
I've been corrected, there's another one coming, so, yeah. Probably, you're probably doing six monthly.
Is the Commonwealth State and Territories Committee meeting the only forum by which states and territories collectively engage with the Commonwealth about veterans' issues? Or is it also that ministerial advisory council? And which is the one that, or do they both do this? I mean, in terms of the substantive policy development? What are the, is that the committee?
The committee would do some of the work, but obviously it would go to the ministerial council for consideration and recommendation. But certainly at a committee level, they'll look at sort of policy options and which policies are working in each jurisdiction.
So at a practical level, how does it move from being something that's discussed at a committee meeting to actually becoming a plan and policy?
Pretty rapidly. There's not a huge administrative process around, you know, developing the policy and practice, you know, initiating it. We're very small and quite agile and if we identify a potentially beneficial initiative, then we can mostly translate that into some action pretty quickly.
At a state level, yeah, definitely.
At state level, yeah. You're talking about collaboration with the feds.
But that's what I'm talking about, the collaboration. How does it move to the coming?
Well, that really would be driven by the federal minister's office and agency, so DVA. But what we would do is, you know, in those ministerial meetings, agree or support an initiative and then them enacting it would require that agency to do it because ultimately, most of the things you're talking about are larger scale and across the nation and require more resourcing than we have.
In terms of the issue that we were discussing before with DVA grants, is that one of the issues that you've raised at these committee meetings?
Look, I just, it wasn't, I just, at those meetings, tell people, tell other ministers or just share the fact that that's something that we have done. We had the intention with my predecessor, we initiated it post the last election and we have, I think, seen some good outcomes from being out. It just means that what little funding we have is used more effectively and it provides certainty to the people who are delivering the service rather than the uncertainty associated with annual grants applications. And it means that you can employ people, give them certainty. You can deliver the service, the people receiving the service know that there's more certainty because it's an enduring process.
So just to be a little bit clearer, one of the issues that you identified, both in your statement, but I think as part of the strategy, is that it's the DVA delivery of grants direct to community groups without reference to state government?
Oh.
Now, is that an issue that you've raised at these committee meetings?
It's not something I'm deeply aggrieved by. It's just an observation that there might be a better way of achieving a greater outcome, a greater impact if things were coordinated and perhaps there were fewer of those grants and they were larger and they were aligned in purpose. So if we've got a programme that's delivering something that's effective, rather than a number of smaller grants in that particular field of endeavour being given by the federal agency to a range of different ESOs who are all working to some extent in the same space, it might be more effective to, you know, aggregate them, collaborate and even consider funding the service via our service delivery process that we've already established.
So what steps do you take?
No, no, it's certainly been raised, I think, in committees and meetings and through other informal discussions, but it's always, I think, done in the spirit of how do we work better together, I think, from both sides? And how do we direct better to the right services that are needed by veterans and their families? So I think the spirit of collaboration is there, but I think some of the structures, we just, you know, I think it's just recognising that you can always do things better. And, you know, the more continuous services and the stronger the services are, the better the service provision will be to those that need it.
Do you think that those structures should be put in place, rather than it just being an identified issue? Should there then be action, for example, that requires DVA to consult with the state government prior to delivering community grants?
Look, I think there's an opportunity for them to do it. I don't know that it needs to be a directive. I can say that at the ministerial meetings, the people were receptive. You know, they had the secretary of the agency there, the minister, they were receptive to the concept. It's a bit constrained across the nation by the expectation of these grant schemes being continued in their current form. So that's not necessarily, there might be a willingness or an ambition on government's behalf to achieve what, or do what we're doing, where you reduce the number and get bigger amounts and focus more on the service delivery over a period of time. But there's a lot of ESOs out there who've, in recent years, have just proliferated in number and are all keen to seek funding. So that's a difficult environment because they have an expectation that the current scheme's going to continue to fund what service or whatever activity they're doing.
What steps do you think need to happen to address that issue?
I think maybe it's, maybe we can assist through demonstrating that there is an outcome from doing what we did, that's more, that's efficient use of the funding and a greater delivery of service. So as we progress down this path, noting that we only really did it last couple of years, if we can demonstrate that it's returned a greater quality of service to the vet- years, if we can demonstrate that it's returned a greater quality of service to the veteran community and it is enduring because we have certainty of funding and there's established organisations that are capable of administering funding effectively, we can show that and the benefit that's accrued to the veterans as a consequence, then that will probably benefit other jurisdictions, including the federal government, in maybe trying to achieve the same.
And at the time, I'll just ask you one more question before I ask the commissioners whether they have any questions for you. You mentioned before that there had been about 10 committee meetings and then there have been a few advisory council meetings in the last few years. Can you identify for the commissioners, any practical outcomes of those meetings? Policy changes, real change?
The dog thing is a, we identified that there were, first of all, the first meetings I went on with the previous government's minister, identified that there were no assistance dogs being provided by DVA in Western Australia to Western Australian veterans. And the next meeting I had, they'd changed that. So they were actually providing some dogs, but they were all trained by East Coast trainers. So now they are aware that we are in, we've funded establishing a service here. There's only, it's just nothing formal, but the minister has indicated that in the event that we get a service provider established here, then they would seek to fund any dogs they're delivering in Western Australia via that service delivery, you know, by that person rather than funding someone else elsewhere. So that's, you know, the process, they identified a problem, transitioned towards firstly giving us a service of some description and now looking towards supporting in a collaborative way the solution that we've identified.
Just ask one more question. I know I said before it was my last one, but just from the state's perspective, what do you think needs to happen to improve overall coordination and collaboration between the Commonwealth and the other states and territories?
I just think continuing the regular contact and the current process is effective. I think it's demonstrating that we can identify challenges and solve the problems pretty quickly. And there's no malicious element to any breakdown in communications in the past. I think we just got to talk more regularly and it does help the ministers getting together, even though you've got the working group or the working level officer meetings much more frequently. Ministers regularly meeting as well enables some really good progress and I think that that'll continue. Although this, every, in this particular field of endeavour, every government in the country is aligned in purpose, you know, they want to do better. They recognise it as a field that we must do the best we possibly can to support our veterans. And I've not witnessed anything that contradicted that intent.
No, and I think the structures are relatively new, like they haven't been operating for decades. They've been operating for a couple of years. So I think the fact that they're there, the fact that they're being cemented and the fact that there is alignment of purpose and commitment, I think is a good thing. So I think that the results will, you know, they'll yield further results as they go forward and get stronger and stronger operating together.
I'll leave it there. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Minister Papalia and Ms Dawson?
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I just wanted to start by commending you for the initiative you've taken in relation to the assistance dogs. It's certainly an issue that's been raised with us a number of times, not specifically, well, we have specifically had the WA issue raised, but the access to assistance dogs. And of course, there are some limitations at the moment. DVA, for example, only funds psychiatric assistance dogs for PTSD and not other mental health conditions. So just something to keep in mind, perhaps even if you do get your program funded through DVA, there may still be some issues there that might need to be watched. I did want to ask whether you have any steps underway to implement a veteran identifier across WA public services, you know, across health, corrections, police, housing, et cetera? Because you said, for example, they did the survey of the rough sleeping, but didn't actually ask whether they were a veteran. If the information was collected routinely, acknowledging that it's still got to be self-identified, but it was collected routinely, some of this information may be more readily available in future years.
We haven't identified a veteran's unique identification sort of ID at the moment. We have initiated a cross-agency working group though through Defence West to start to have a look at, you know, how we manage data sharing and data access and then what else we can do in that regard. So that may come. Certainly we'll learn from what other jurisdictions have done in that respect as well. But yeah, at this stage, we haven't identified that as a key step.
Data sharing's good, but if you don't have the data in the first place to know that someone's a veteran, it has its limitations.
No, absolutely. The identification is important and self-identification has, I think, caused a lot of issues around the robustness of the data that's available.
Yeah. Minister, can I just perhaps understand, you made a couple of comments about veterans not being core business. Now, that's not to say that you're in any way dismissive of the needs of veterans. In fact, quite the contrary, quite clearly. But I just, I guess I'm wanting to understand your perspective on where the division lies. We know that the Commonwealth is responsible for certain services, portfolios, states and territories responsible for some others, some of which veterans will need, like housing, like health, yeah. So where exactly do you see that, you know, split? Is there an answer to that? It's not an easy question, I know, but-
Look, I should reflect on that observation about it not being core business. By that I mean Veterans Affairs, Department of Veterans Affairs is the agency with the primary responsibility for caring for veterans and they have a far bigger budget and more resources than we ever will at state level. What we do is by establishing a portfolio, ensure that there is a focus at state level and that we try to identify the best way we can make a contribution that would be positive and get good outcomes at state level. But we don't have anywhere near the, you know, we don't even have oversight of, as we identified, some of the sort of knowledge of where people are and where they're moving and the like that DVA has. All of the other services that you're talking about are normal state government business. So homelessness, housing, homelessness, mental health, health, veterans are absolutely eligible for and supported by all of those initiatives. And in Western Australia, we've massively increased our funding for mental health. For instance, Mental Health Commission's budgets, I think, more than doubled in recent years. And you're talking about additional billions of dollars of funding for support to those services. And we deliver those services to everyone in the community and different, you know, different parts of the community as appropriate for a focus. But what, I don't know that there's any benefit in isolating veterans, they're never excluded from those services.
But do I, am I to understand from what you're saying, that given that there are some responsibilities that belong to states and territories and obviously veterans can access those services and possibly would benefit from accessing them, you know, locally? But given that there is some responsibility from the Commonwealth for the lifetime wellbeing of veterans, that perhaps are you suggesting that there needs to be a greater financial contribution to the states and territories in order to enable them to deliver better services within their portfolio areas? I don't want to be putting words into your mouth, I'm just trying to understand what you're actually, your meaning is.
I think it's additive services to support veterans is important. Certainly accessing the services that are available to all, sort of, the community of Western Australia and those who need them, health and mental health, absolutely, we encourage and sort of enable sort of veterans to participate in those. But additional services and specific services for veterans, it does require additional funding and it does require sort of localised, I think, activation so that it connects into the existing services and does that in a really effective and complimentary way. And if they don't work together, they can actually cause fracturing and actually not achieve what they're intended to achieve. So I think it's the additive services that need to be provided to veterans. I think we need to work on a lot more effectively and there is funding required to do that. And-
Thank you.
The fund, I mean, if you want, no, we need funding from the federal government for some of these services that we've already, you know, supported and we're initiating, you know, we're establishing, we're trying to establish the Andrew Russell Veterans Living Programme. We need them to build the buildings. That's something we need them to do. And that's a suitable and appropriate contribution they could make. All of the health services are kind of other portfolios and they're big and they're, you know, the federal government funds, you know, part of the state's costs in those endeavours anyway. We'll always, the ministers responsible will always seek additional funding where it's appropriate. But in our field of endeavour, things like, that's probably the biggest single initiative that, you know, additional funding initiative I'd like to see from the federal government.
Can I just move on?
Oh, sorry, and sorry, and the Chris Tilly Programme, if they, you know, if we can, I understand that's supported by the federal government in South Australia, so inside the prisons. We don't have, that would be an additional cost and if it's, you know, if it's something that's deemed valuable here, then we would seek to get them to fund that as well.
We did, just as a comment, we did actually, when we were in New Zealand earlier this year, do a visit with some representatives from their correctional services. And they likewise are doing quite an impressive programme, looking at the needs of veterans who are prisoners, as well as the supports for veterans who are prison officers, with the same focus of supporting both and supporting incarcerated veterans as they transition or whilst they're in corrections and then when they transition, supporting prison officers who are veterans to, with the aim of corrective services becoming an employer of choice potentially for veterans.
I think that is the focus, the Chris Tilly Programme too. So they do, it's both staff and prisoners.
I just wanted to ask about the Ministerial Council and the officials' meetings. The Ministerial Council, as I understand it, the task force was replaced the former Prime Minister's Veterans-
Coag. I think so. I think those, they're, it's, we're all still finding our way post-COVID as, you know, they removed a lot of the coags.
Yes.
So ministers' meetings that used to be scheduled under the coag structure-
Yes.
Went. Not all of them, not all, a version of them didn't come back in all cases. In this case, at the initiative of the federal ministers, they have re-initiated regular meetings. And we're, in a way, we're feeling our way through how it works and-
Okay, that was kind of where I was going. And I just wanted to know, had there been a gap in the officials actually having a meeting through that change or did that officials' meeting continue through?
Similar, there was a gap as well.
Right. Okay. And just my last question, Minister, you said quite passionately that all the states and territories and the Commonwealth are aligned, we must do better for veterans. I guess it raises for me the question of the Australian Defence Veterans Covenant, which currently is a Commonwealth-initiated covenant. I just wonder whether you had a view whether or not states and territories should also sign up to that covenant?
I, really, I just think we should all dedicate ourselves to collaborating for better outcomes for veterans. And really, at state and territory level, it's very much about practical measures, you know, rapid response and changing things for the better in the near term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Minister, and Ms Dawson, for your evidence. Perhaps not surprisingly, my questions reflect a similar theme about the desirability of cooperation amongst the states as well as with the Commonwealth. You mentioned two programmes, the Andrew Russell Veteran Living Centre and the Chris Tinley Programme in prisons, both of them in South Australia, which you're interested in implementing here. Do you know whether any other states or territories have a similar interest in doing that?
I don't know specifically. I know that people are aware of the Chris Tilly Initiative, a programme inside prisons in South Australia because the South Australian Minister presented about that at their last ministers' meeting.
And one would think that if the Commonwealth's interested in my programme, other states on board too.
They contribute to it, so obviously they know.
I think they're also funding some research through Flinders University on that programme too. So yeah, certainly at the Commonwealth level, there's interest in that programme.
That's what they're funding.
Yep.
And my other question related to what you call the translation of skills. And you spoke about taves here, doing work with veterans to upgrade the skills they'd learnt in the military to assist them in the civilian sphere. Have any universities here expressed interest in doing that sort of work too?
The dives programme isn't just for tafe, it's for any skills enhancement. So with the scholarships available for tertiary education as well.
We've also heard of several universities on the east coast that have set up specific programmes for veterans, including an element of providing academic credit for the work veterans have done within the military. Has any university over here taken an approach like that?
Not at this stage, no, they haven't. There are numerous veterans actually employed in the university sector here, holding quite senior positions. And they do collaborate with RSL WA and Legacy WA and host events and the like, but they haven't run a similar programme to the one that you've described. But they could, we could certainly investigate that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Minister. Just a couple of points I wanted to make. It certainly seems to us that the ex-service organisations sector in West Australia seems to be functioning better than some other places. There seems to be more collaboration and cooperation, which we're certainly happy to see, just as a comment. The other issue is, and I think Commissioner Brown just mentioned with you briefly, the issue of the ministers in each of the states and territories getting together as a regular forum and so on. As you probably recall, we have had, this commission's had one meeting with that forum. We do plan to come back and we'll probably come back with some specific questions that we'd like each of the jurisdictions to address and then we might meet after that to try and work out what we may recommend in terms of the role of states and territories. But I do want to place on the record that the commission certainly recognises the very important role that states and territories play in service delivery, housing, education, homelessness, incarceration and engagement with the justice system. Generally, it's all at state and territory level. So you are a crucial player. And the final point I wanted to make is just to simply thank you and Ms Dawson as well, not only for your evidence today, but your office and the department have facilitated a few things for us, including a very, very productive session we had with the whole ex-service organisations sector, which was very productive. So thank you for that. I don't really have any other questions. Mr Sefton, do you have anything you wish to raise?
No, nothing arising.
Okay. Mr Fordham?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Fraser, if you're with us?
I am. No, thank you.
I am, no, thank you, Commissioner, no questions.
Thank you. Mr Sheph, do I have any matters arising?
No, nothing further, Commissioners.
Okay.
That's all, may the witnesses please be released from their summons?
Okay. Yep, thank you, you're released from your summons to appear today. Thank you again for your evidence and the amount of effort that was put into preparing the material that was given to us, we're grateful. I also need to just correct one issue from yesterday, which is the release of Brigady Langford from her summons to appear. Apologies if we missed that yesterday.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. If there's now any matters, we'll adjourn for 15 minutes.
Thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission is adjourned for 15 minutes.
The Royal Commission is resumed, please be seated.
Can I please ask the operator to display the closing tender bundle list? Now, I understand that the confidentiality claims that were previously claimed over these documents have been resolved, and accordingly I attended the documents in the manner in which they described in the list.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shiptour. So they'll be accepted into evidence and allocated the next lot of numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, this hearing block is focused on leadership, governance and accountability in the ADF, and you have heard some powerful views about the challenges associated with this in the contemporary Australian Defence Force. We thank all the witnesses who appeared before you in this hearing block. Commissioners, you heard at the start of this hearing block of the important work of the Navy Clearance Divers, the high-risk environment in which they operate, the many challenges they face, including work, health and safety risks, both physical and psychological, high vacancy rates and a very high rate of medical discharge. You also heard some concerning statistics obtained by a survey conducted by the Navy Clearance Diver Trust, which, although limited in the number of respondents, nevertheless revealed a significant mental health and suicidality concerns. You also heard the view of Ms Denise Goldworthy, the Chair of the Navy Clearance Divers Trust, and also an experienced Board Chair and Director, that good governance should dictate a robust response to such work, health and safety risks using the well-established four lines of defence. We expect to hear more from Navy Clearance Divers in upcoming hearing blocks. Commissioners, you also heard from several commanders and commanding officers during this hearing block. You heard of the complexity of some of the government governance arrangements within the ADF. For example, for the submariner workforce, you heard of the different lines of command and control, and how arrangements change depending on whether a crew are alongside, at sea or on operations. Likewise, you heard that responsibility for their healthcare changes depending on location and mission. You heard that command accountability within defence is somewhat opaque, with an absence of metrics for command performance and an absence of transparency about command performance, both to those below as well as to those above the commander. You heard that the performance appraisal process for officers does not include any measurement in relation to the achievement of outcomes, only an assessment against leadership qualities deemed desirable. Importantly, you heard that there is currently no outcome measure within the performance appraisals of leaders that focuses on the wellbeing of their people, nor any reporting about suicide or suicidality, only a KPI for retention rates. Commissioners, accountability remains a key focus for this Royal Commission. You also heard that currently the only options for commanders are career progression or discharge, that there is a need for alternatives in order to effectively assist commanders with performance problems, to overcome their difficulties and remain within defence. You heard about a lack of agency experienced by some commanders when decision-making is centralised within the Australian Defence Force. Importantly, you heard that this can impact a commander's ability to both punish poor behaviour and to promote good behaviour. You heard a little about leadership training in the ADF, and that this differs between senior leaders and more junior officers in other ranks. Commissioners, you may wish to hear more about leadership training in the ADF for all ranks. In several sessions, you heard about the briefings and information provided to or used by leaders when taking up a new command role, particularly in relation to mental health and suicidality and related risk factors. Commissioners, it was apparent that the approach varies between leaders, but also that not all information that could be helpful to them in informing their priorities for the new posting is routinely drawn upon. Perhaps this is an area where further advice or standardisation is required. Commissioners, you heard from some the view that a two-year command tenure is sometimes insufficient to do the job most effectively, and that a three-year cycle would perhaps be preferable. You also heard that it can be difficult for commanders to prioritise longer-term strategic matters because of the need to deal with the urgent short-term matters. Commissioners, you may wonder whether this has been a factor in the ability of defence to adequately prioritise suicide prevention and the wellbeing of its members. You heard about a capability gap in some parts of the ADF, and repeatedly of the hollowness in the workforce and concerns about burnout. Illustrative of this, you heard that a Pulse report on submariner maritime welfare officers in May 2020 suggested that one in five members in that role indicated that they were experiencing burnout. You also heard that there is no current measure of workforce wellbeing or of burnout in the ADF. Commissioners, you did hear of measures like the service separation threshold that are being used to manage operational tempo and ensure sustainability of the workforce. But you also heard that there is a need to be able to have meaningful measures at the individual defence member level. For example, a measure that can clearly indicate the time a defence member is available to spend with their family, so-called heads-on pillow. You also heard that there is a need for a whole-of-service approach to decompression, rather than the current approach that only occurs post-deployment. You heard from one commander that it can be hard to balance the competing demands of preparing for war and maintaining the welfare of troops. Commissioners, you heard that unacceptable behaviour is likely to be under-reported in the ADF for a range of reasons, but that reducing unacceptable behaviour is an area of focus, and you heard a little about the approach to management of unacceptable behaviour. You also heard acknowledgement of the need to ensure psychological safety in the ADF workplace, and that unacceptable behaviour can contribute to mental health issues. Of concern, Commissioners, you heard of the occurrence of significant cultural problems in a regiment in the Northern Territory, evidenced by practices of sexual belittling and references to the picking of women. Yet it seems the commanding officer was only alerted to the problem through a routine audit conducted by the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force. You heard that while an active response programme was implemented once the spotlight was shone upon this problem, cultural change is hard and takes time. Commissioners, this example highlights that poor culture is perpetuated when bad behaviours are tolerated, but that poor culture can skillfully or willfully fly under the radar. In this hearing, Commissioners, you also heard of more than 180 suicide-related incidents linked to Darwin's Robertson Barracks over approximately the last five years. While the remote location was cited as a contributing factor, you heard that this number of incidents was higher than other Northern Territory bases, and that other factors may also be contributing, including the operational tempo, which had been impacted by government directives to the ADF to assist with COVID, aged care and natural disaster responses. We know that the latter has been the subject of consideration in other forums, but is a matter on which, Commissioners, you may wish to form a view. Speaking in relation to the remoteness that is a significant factor to those serving in the Northern Territory, you heard one commander state his view that the Army could do more to address some of the challenges posed by remote postings, challenges such as the cost for families to be able to return home to visit family members, and the challenges of accessing quality education for children. Commissioners, you also heard one experienced leader courageously state that service damages you, and the Army needs to acknowledge that service comes at a cost and appropriately mitigate that issue. Commissioners, you may see this as an insightful comment in relation to the tackling the issue of defence and veteran suicide. That is, the ADF needs to acknowledge the risks that arise from serving your country and do more to address those risks. You heard about the health service delivery, including changes that have occurred in response to an increased mental health demand signal between 2017 and 2020. You also heard that efforts are being made to normalise mental health issues and to reduce the stigma attached to seeking help for mental health issues, but that is impossible to eradicate. Commissioners, this remains a challenging issue for the ADF. You also heard suggestions from an experienced ADF mental health leader for addressing wellbeing and reducing suicidality, including increasing mental health literacy through education, enabling command to better understand human behaviour, reducing stigma associated with mental health, implementing the Safe Side Programme, ensuring welfare boards operate consistently, and setting realistic expectations for discharging members on what healthcare will be available to them post-discharge. You also heard that there is a need to uncouple deployability from employability. In this week's hearing, you heard about a non-technical review of 59 IG ADF reports into 57 deaths by suicide of serving ADF members. While such a review has never been previously conducted, perhaps surprisingly, given that this Royal Commission has been established since July 2021, you heard that this review was only requested by the Chief of Defence Force in February 2022 and completed in September 2022. You heard the findings of this review and of its limitations, and you heard of the recommended further work that is needed, including technical and contextual reviews. The work appears to not yet have commenced some eight months later, perhaps due to delays in tasks being assigned, perhaps due to resource issues, and perhaps due to a lack of prioritisation. Commissioners, you also heard of the establishment of the Mental Health and Wellbeing Branch within the Defence People Group to provide a whole-of-enterprise approach to mental health and wellbeing. While this move provides a single accountable officer within defence with responsibility for leading suicide prevention, it should be noted, Commissioners, that haste has not appeared to be a priority. The decision to establish the branch was made in June 2022, and functions within Joint Health Command were identified for transfer to the new branch. The new Director General was appointed in November 2022, yet the transfer of functions to the new branch has not yet begun. Three functions are to be transferred by one July. Final decisions are yet to be made about others, and a mature branch is not anticipated until at least January 2025. Indeed, even an implementation plan for the new branch is not expected to be finalised until October 2023, almost 12 months after the appointment of the new Director General. You also heard that the responsibility for co-designing a joint mental health and wellbeing strategy for Defence and DVA has been given to the new Director General Mental Health and Wellbeing Branch, and that this work is underway and is expected to be delivered by January 2024, although it will likely not be accompanied by complete action plans, which will likely be delivered later. Commissioners, you also heard that there have been delays in finalising the continuous improvement framework that was foreshadowed in the 2018 to 2023 Defence Mental Health and Wellbeing Strategy, but that this framework should finally be completed as the strategy comes close to a close at the end of 2023. Once completed, it is intended to provide an evaluation capacity for defence going forward, although you heard that much more work is required on improving data collection and analysis within the ADF. Finally this morning, you heard from Minister Papaliah, himself a veteran, and Ms Linda Dawson, and the work of the West Australian Government in support of better outcomes for veterans. Thank you, Commissioners. That is the council closing.
Thank you, Mr. Shiptour. That brings us to the end of our ninth public hearing block here in Perth. This hearing block has examined key issues of leadership and organisational culture within the ADF, accountability and timely action to learn from the past. The evidence presented during this hearing again raises serious questions as to whether leadership within defence has been taking adequate and timely action in relation to responding to the very real and pressing issues of suicide and suicidality within its ranks. There has been a disturbing number of suicide-related incidents involving our current sailors, soldiers and aviators. These figures are not available on the public record at this time, but I must stress that the magnitude of the problem must not be underestimated. We've received evidence of a study that analysed 59 reports into 57 deaths by suicide between June 2016 and June 2020, as council assisting outlined. This study does not represent all deaths during that period, only the reports received during that time. We've heard that the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force has taken, on average, more than 600 days to release individual inquiry reports into each of these 57 deaths by suicide. The study I mentioned was a non-technical analysis of these reports, but it would seem from the evidence we've uncovered during this hearing that there is inadequate systemic analysis of suicide deaths or suicide behaviours by defence to inform meaningful action to ensure the mental health and wellbeing of its people. We note the Chief of Defence Force has appointed a Brigadier or one-star officer to head up a new Mental Health and Wellbeing Branch. However, it appears that that senior officer charged with looking at mental health and suicide prevention within defence at this time has clearly not been provided all the necessary information, staff or resources to respond to these issues at an organisational level. In fact, seven months on, the Mental Health and Wellbeing Branch has only a handful of staff, and it is not clear what has been achieved practically to combat suicide or promote wellbeing. To quote Brigadier Langford, "They are building the plane as they're flying it." There is evidence that there will be no mature, fully-resourced and functioning branch until at least January 2025. We note Defence was able to stand up a very well-resourced task force led by a two-star officer to assist this Royal Commission in a very quick manner. Yet Defence's approach to investigating and reporting on suicides has progressed at snail's pace, and we are yet to find sufficient evidence of urgency in responding to these complex issues holistically, even with this Royal Commission sitting. A question must arise: how seriously is Defence taking these issues at an organisational level? Defence is a large, complex and geographically dispersed organisation with three service arms and a large bureaucratic arm, whose command structures are challenging for some to understand, even for those members serving in them. And it's important that we acknowledge that there are some very good people in leadership positions across the services who obviously care deeply about the wellbeing of their people and are doing their best. We hope that this is the rule and not the exception. But the Chief of Defence Force and senior leaders must have a sense of urgency on these matters. Programs and appropriate governance need to be in place to make sure the wellbeing of serving members is of paramount consideration. All leaders within defence must be driven to make use of all information available to them, to be more curious, given the autonomy to think outside the box when it comes to identifying risk factors for suicide and suicidality, and opportunities for early intervention, and then held accountable for the outcomes. Over the past two weeks, we've again uncovered issues of culture and incident reporting across the services, as well as command responses to unacceptable behaviour such as bullying, harassment and misogyny. We've heard contemporary examples of our servicemen and women doing it tough, including increased pressures on our sailors and submariners at HMAS Stirling caused by the hollowness of the Navy's workforce, leading to a recurring cycle of burnout, which is placing further strain on their mental health. There was the tragic loss of three clearance divers to suicide in the space of two years, and we heard that the Navy Divers Trust efforts to bring critical issues to the attention of Navy were seemingly to no avail. From the evidence we have heard, it is clear that leaders at all levels of the defence hierarchy need to be more responsible and accountable for their actions or lack thereof. We feel strongly that measuring performance for accountability and transparency are essential. As mentioned by council assisting earlier in a closed session, we examined issues pertaining to the Special Air Service Regiment based at Campbell Barracks here in Perth. The evidence provided a valuable insight into matters of relevance to the work of the Royal Commission insofar as they relate to this special unit within the ADF. Our inquiries are far from over. There's an enormous amount of work still to be done as we work towards our final report. The issues under investigation are complex, multi-layered and many. In line with our terms of reference, we will visit the United States, one of Australia's key five ice partners, next month to examine how they've responded to similar issues in their military to examine how they've responded to similar issues in their military community and how they support their serving and ex-serving personnel. This follows previous meetings with government and defence officials in the UK, Canada and New Zealand. We will continue to hold private sessions with people with lived experience to learn from their deeply personal experiences. We've held about 470 private sessions to date, with hundreds more to be conducted for those who have already applied throughout 2023 and early 2024. We will continue to meet face-to-face with our servicemen and women as we visit defence bases around the country to hear about their experiences of life in the military. We're committed to working collaboratively with experts and key stakeholder groups, particularly as we look to recommend practical and long-lasting solutions to any cultural and systemic issues impacting our serving and ex-serving ADF members. We will also continue to accept submissions from individuals and groups through until the 13th of October this year. And there will be further public hearings, including those already announced for Adelaide and Melbourne. Hearing Block 10 in Adelaide will commence on the 17th of July and we anticipate hearing evidence in relation to postings, promotions and career management, families, family advocates and the role of defence member family support, the progress being made on claims management at the Department of Veteran Affairs, as well as some expert evidence in relation to leadership change management and burnout. That will be followed by Hearing Block 11 in Melbourne from the 28th of August. As I stated in my opening remarks, that Australia's defence capability first and foremost comes from the brave men and women who pull on the uniform of our Navy, Army and Air Force and go to work each day to protect us. Each and every one of us has a duty to ensure defence protects them. We Commissioners and our entire staff reiterate our commitment to completing the most thorough inquiry possible, reaching recommendations that prescribe the best possible solutions and making findings that are both fully justified by the evidence and persuasive enough to induce action instead of the inertia demonstrated by previous governments and Commonwealth bodies. We remain determined to succeed in our task. The risk is far too great for us not to. Thank you and safe travels for those who are travelling. If there's no other issues, we'll adjourn now.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veteran Suicide is adjourned to Monday, 17 July 2023.